See, I have one person on Cara. You're on mute. If you'd like to come off of mute.
Hello.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. So I've been holding these sessions for a few years now. Have you attended any of mine before?
No, this is my first time.
Great, perfect. Alrighty. I'm gonna share my screen here, so. I'm gonna go over just exam-taking technique and how they write the exam. So that knowledge is usually helpful. Because what? The idea is for the examinees is to try and get in the examiner's head. When they're writing the question and figuring out exactly what are they looking for? What knowledge are they seeking from me with this question? And if you understand that and the types of questions they write. Then it's a lot easier if you don't, you know. If you have to go back to a question if you're unsure, it'll help you better. Guess, so to speak. Or if you're down to two answers, which one to choose? So, I'd like to start by saying. I don't want you, or if anybody else joins, to feel bad about not passing. The pass rate for NAVLE has significantly dropped since 2019. 2019, I wanna say it was over 93%. Last year, it was 88%. The year before that, it was 86%. Which is. Unheard of with NAVLE. It's always been above 90% pass rate for. Decade upon decade. There are many things that. Have caused the rate to drop. I believe the two. Factors that played the biggest role are number one, increasing class size. Schools have increased class size year upon year, yet they don't increase faculty. And number two, remote learning. Since COVID, I guess that's been more of an option. That you don't have to go to class. You can listen to a recorded lecture or attend it remotely. And when you're not in that environment, you just don't learn as well. That's why, you know. When you look at like continuing education and having a meeting versus having an online. Like article or review or something like that. Respondents always get more out of attending the meeting. Alrighty, so. What I'm showing you now is from. The NBME, which is the National Board of Medical Examiners. These are the guidelines for them writing the, basically the, the human. NAVLE test, right? Which is the NBME. NAVLE exam writers are supposed to follow the guidelines in this handbook. So that's where we can get a little bit of an idea about the question writing. So the first chapter in this book is basically the importance of examination and. Psychological assessment and things like that. But basically, the NAVLE is a multiple choice exam, right? It's 400 questions, 200 each day. There are two types of multiple exam, or sorry, of multiple choice questions. So one is called best answer, and one is basically rote memorization or recall or true/false. So. With the one best answer type questions, that means more than one answer is, is correct. You have to choose the most. Correct answer. So for example. You're treating a dog with GDV. Which of the following therapies, if not provided, could lead to the patient's demise? Right? So attaching an ECG. Giving, you know, shock fluid therapy. Providing analgesia. Providing an antibiotic. Right? So I could argue that all of those things are correct. You need to do all those things for a GDV. Well, maybe not the antibiotic. However. If you don't give the dog pain meds, he'll probably live. If you don't hook up the ECG right away. Probably be okay. If you don't give fluids, that pet won't make it, right? So that's an example of, you know, one best answer. True/false is basically. Asking which of the following statements is true or false. In a multiple choice fashion. Right? So an example of that would be, again, pure rote memorization. So which of the following is? The type of virus that causes FELV, right? So you would have a enveloped DNA virus, an enveloped RNA virus, a non-enveloped RNA virus. And an enveloped RNA virus, right? So. FELV is caused by an enveloped RNA virus, or you just have to know that fact, right? So that's a true/false. Type of multiple choice question. Okay. So general rules for one best answer questions, right? This is for the examiner, and if you. Again, know the rules that they have to use to write the question, it gives you a little bit of a leg up on answering them. So number one is, they need to use. Text. And words that are clear and unambiguous, right? So. They need to use. Appropriate. Phrasing. So they can't say things like, this may lead to this, or. Frequently, or in almost every case, right? It has to be more direct. Looking at. The distractors, right? So the answer and the distractors are all of your options, right? A, B, C, and D. They are not supposed to write negatively phrased questions. But they still get through because there's a big question bank and the computer pulls from this bank. And some of these questions in the bank have not been thoroughly edited, is my understanding. So they're, they're not supposed to have questions that say things like this. Which of the following is not? All of. All of the following are appropriate except. So they're not supposed to have a negatively phrased question. That's number one. Number two, the question, if it is a true/false, if it is a recall type question. It should be written in a manner where you do not need to look up the answers in the distractor. Meaning you should be able to read the stem of the question. And come up with the answer on your own, right? So if we go back to. The FELV question, which type of virus is the FELV virus? Without looking at the options, you should. Recall that it is a RNA enveloped virus. They are also directed not to have more than one option as the correct answer. So. They are not supposed to give options as all of the above are correct. None of the above, those should never be options. A and B, A and D, you know, where you have multiple. Selections as, as the correct answer. It should just be one answer, not multiple answers. And then lastly. And I'm just trying to figure out the best way to. To phrase this, but when you're stuck, so to speak, and you don't know the correct answer. Exam writers are biased, and sometimes they will make the correct answer. They provide a little more detail with it. It's, it's the longer answer. So when in doubt, if you have no clue, pick the longest answer if it, you know, obviously is, is sensical. Okay. Do you have any other questions about exam writing, or how they write the exam? Guys, good? So, I'm going to now bring up a practice exam. And. I'm gonna need you guys to participate here, so you're gonna have to come off of mute, because we're gonna be looking at these questions and answering them together. Let me blow this up so we can see it. Alrighty. So I have like 60 practice NAVLE questions. I also will do a neuro review for you guys during one of our sessions, and I also have a. Small animal specific. Exam that we'll, we'll review too. So. Let's start here with this. Oh, this thing keeps showing up where I don't want it to. So question one, which of the following is the most common cause of maxillary sinusitis in the horse? Okay, so we have bacterial or respiratory tract disease going into the sinus. Infected tooth root. Foreign body. And then puncture wounds. Okay, so this is an example of. One of those most correct, right? Because any of these things could cause maxillary sinusitis. However. It's asking, what is the most common? So. I recommend, when you are reading the question, when you're reading the stem. You should be able to. Highlight. When you're taking the exam, right on Examsoft. So what I want you to start doing is highlight what is the question asking? Okay, so it's asking for the most common. Maxillary sinusitis in a horse. So large animal questions. Large animal questions are grouped. Into two. One is about herd health, and one is about the individual animal. So here with the horse, it's just asking about an individual horse, but you'll see later on when we have questions about. You know, you're on a farm and there's a bunch of pigs with diarrhea. Or you're at a feedlot and there's, you know, a bunch of cows having trouble breathing. Then you need to put your herd health hat on, right? So when we think about herd health. Issues, right? We think about husbandry. Right? So their environment that they're in, how they're shipped. Do they live in a barn? Do they live outside? Are they chained up somewhere? Access to food and water? What is their diet? How often are they fed? Has there been anything recent in the environment? For example, you know, maybe everything froze and they don't have access to water. And now a bunch of cows are becoming neuralgic and circling and seizuresing. Due to hypernatremia. Because they don't have access to water. So. The other thing with husb-, you know, so that's one aspect is husbandry, and the other aspect is infectious disease. Right? So when we're talking about herd health, lots of questions about infectious disease, usually viral. But also we can see things like shipping fever and stuff like that, that's more bacterial. So back to this question, what do you guys think? What is the most common cause of maxillary sinusitis in the horse?
I would probably choose B.
Choose B? Yep, infection and abscessation of a tooth root extending into the sinus. So. Can puncture wounds cause sinusitis? Yes. Are they common? No. Inhaled foreign body, you know, can see one or two a year maybe. But again, having a tooth root abscess and that causing sinusitis is much more common. Oh, that lower respiratory disease extending into the sinus, that's, that's really, really not common. Usually it's the other way around. Usually can have an upper respiratory that extends lower. Again, doesn't happen very frequently, but from going from the lower tract to the upper tract is, is pretty unheard of. Okay. Next. So next we have an African gray parrot. Okay. It died unfortunately, may have synecosis. Okay, which of the following findings is most likely to confirm the diagnosis? So. Here, you need to know. It's basically memorization, right? So what happens, you know. With synecosis, what organs are affected? What would you, how would you confirm the diagnosis? Okay, so again, it's one of those. Multiple answers could be correct type questions. So paddomegaly and splenomegaly. Okay, probably not. Direct enough, right? Probably not. Too many, too many diseases can cause that, right? Not specific enough. Identification of the cause of organism by Gram stain, right? So you would need to know. Synicosis is caused by bacteria and you can Gram stain it. However, right, Gram stain only gives you positive and negative. It doesn't. You know, if you have a Gram positive, it could be strep, it could be staph, it could be. Other species of bacteria, it's not specific enough. Isolation of chlamydia citicidae. And then presence of acid fast organisms in the liver, these last two. Again, acid fast organisms does narrow it down, but. Not specific enough. It's not gonna give you a confirmation, right? So. Isolation of chlamydia citicidae is the correct answer, right? Because that'll confirm the diagnosis. Alrighty, number three. So we have a Holstein cow. Right, being seen for an appetites. So, are we dealing with a herd or just one individual? Let's keep reading. On auscultation, we have pinging over the ninth and tenth intercostal spaces. We do a centesis. And we get green fluid of the pH of six. What is the most likely source of the fluid? Okay, so you need to know a few things here, right? You need to know number one. Inappetites in a Holstein cow, right? If there's an internal volvulus, what. Most likely happens. And it gives you information of where, right? Left ninth and tenth intercostal spaces. You then get fluid out of this area that has tympani. And the pH is six, so you need to know, again, the different portions of the ruminate GI tract. What has acid pH and what has neutral pH and so on and so forth. So what do you guys think about number three?
I would be between A and D, but I'm unsure, I guess.
Between A and D, good. So, abomacum and rumin, right? So. I know that cows get LDA in the US, they get LDAs. And now we just need to figure out, well, if that fluid, if a pH of six is from the abomacum or the rumin. So by narrowing it down to those two, unfortunately, these are one word answers, right? So the longest answer is not gonna help you. This is, you're gonna get it half, half the time right. So it is the rumin has the pH of six, and I think that is the, the key to knowing that. Okay. Now we get to a dog, finally. Okay, so we have a three-month-old puppy. Weight loss and chronic diarrhea and steatorrhea. We have piliform trophozoites on a direct fecal exam. What is the most appropriate therapy? So this question is an example of double jeopardy. You're, they're not supposed to have these, but they, again, they, they will show up. Why is it double jeopardy? Because you need to know, number one, what is causing. The problem with the puppy? And number two. The treatment, right? The only way you're gonna get the treatment correct is if you know what the cause is. So that's why it's a little bit of a double jeopardy. So. We have diclovos, ivermectin, metronidazole, and. Prozac, quantil, and trimethoprim sulfa. Okay, so a piliform trophozoite, what are we most likely dealing with, with this puppy? What kind of parasite?
Giardia.
Giardia, mhm, and what treatment?
Metro.
True, exactly. Okay. Just one aside regarding diarrhea in adult dogs. The recommendation of the last couple of years is, you know, if a dog just has a primary complaint of. Large bowel diarrhea, so mucousy, maybe with some blood in it. Type diarrhea, and they're, and they're still drinking. And they can maintain their hydration, the recommendation is not to use antibiotic. There's a lot of talk now about the GI biome, and metronidazole disrupts the biome significantly. Now, that being said, there are a handful of dogs that. Will respond to metro. And it is used for coccidia. Alrighty, number five. So we have. An infection of pregnant cows with BVD with bovine viral diarrhea. Causes which of the following neurologic abnormalities in the newborn calf? So we have anencephaly, cerebellar hypoplasia, hydrancephaly, hydrocephalus, and syringomyelia. So hydrancephaly and hydrocephalus are very similar. Hydrocephalus is basically too much fluid in the canals. And hydrancephaly is basically too much fluid in the, in the neurons. Syringomyelia is loss of. The normal crypts and valleys of the, the brain, the commissures and whatnot. Encephaly born without a brain and cerebral cerebellar hypoplasia, born with a cerebellar issue. So what do you guys think? What does this, if this was a cat, what would you be thinking?
Uh, B.
Yes. B is the correct answer, cerebellar hypoplasia, excellent. Alrighty. Next, we have a nine-year-old Boston terrier. Five-centimeter mass in the inguinal area. We do cytology, we see rounder string cells with granules. We got a lymph node that's up. And we see similar cells in the lymph node. And in the blood. What is the most likely, or what is the most appropriate management? So again. Another double jeopardy, right? So right now it's telling you, there's a tumor, this is what it looks like, it is spread. We see it in the lymph node and in the blood. What do you want to do? So. My. Statement about getting into the exam questioner's head. Basically, when you read this, it is saying. Dog has, a dog has cancer. Can we remove it? And get rid of it, or is it spread and do we have to do more general? Therapy? Like chemo? Whole body radiation? And, and M lab, something like that, right? So A, cisplatinum and aluminum hydroxide, so chemo and aluminum hydroxide. Levamisole and aspirin. Prednisone and simetidine. Surgery. And then cryosurgery. So what do you guys think, right? Let's, let's just go through these distractors. So we have a mass and it's spread. Can we, is, is it appropriate just to do surgery?
No.
And what cut, and what kind of mass do you think this is?
Is it like a mast cell?
So mast cell, yep. So we have granules. It's a round cell, right? So remember your round cell tumors. There are five types of round cell tumors. Guys, remember? We have TVT transitional venereal tumor, melanoma, which is kind of like lymphoma. But with melanoma, we have black granules. Lymphoma is a round cell tumor. Mast cell tumors. Right? And then we have B cell tumors. Okay, so those are your round cell tumors. So once they say it's a round cell tumor, you can, you know, think, all right, there's only five of those. And then of those, which ones are going to have purple granules, right? It's only going to be the mast cell tumor. So with mast cell, what have you, what did you guys learn in school? What's, what's the treatment for mast? And how would you stage this one, right? So when we stage, we look at three different things, right? So we look at histology, which we don't have, you know, here as far as, you know, like what the cells looked like as far as how many there were per high power field. Uh, but was there mitosis going on, right? Do we see evidence of, of new tumor cells, you know, dividing? So that's the histological grade, right? A lot of it has to do with how the cells look, how aggressive they are, how many mitotic figures there are. And then we have local, right? Has it spread the lymph nodes? And then we have systemic, has it spread to other organ systems, right? So, you know, a grade one lymphoma would be that we just find abnormal lymphoblasts in a single lymph node. Grade four lymphoma would be it's in all the lymph nodes and it's in the blood and it's in the bone marrow. Okay, so that's staging. So here we have some staging, right? It's in the lymph node and it's in the blood. So how would you grade this type of mast cell tumor? Would you say it's a localized low grade? Or is it a systemic high grade?
Systemic high grade.
So it's, it's, it's systemic, right? So what do you guys think about, you know, doing surgery alone without chemo or radiation for something that is spread to the lymph nodes and now it's in the blood? How helpful is that going to be for that patient? Long-term survival? Yeah, I mean, exactly. Now, if the mass was bleeding and the dog's licking and chewing on it, yeah, we can remove it. Um, and then not do any chemo or anything like that, knowing that, you know, we're just doing a little bit of a Band-Aid. So these current symptoms end. But yes, so in this case, this is spread. So with, in general, with neoplasia that has become systemic, we're going to be using chemotherapy or immunotherapy along with other ancillary, you know, medications. So if we can eliminate D and E, we're left with A, B and C. So what do you guys know about mast cell tumors? What do they release? In addition to them, you know, being cancer and, and growing, causing masses and, and organ, you know, disruption.
Uh, histamine.
Histamine, right? So histamine, right? It's an allergen. We get GI ulcers from histamine. We can have hives and all sorts of things. So with systemic mast cell, we usually add an H2 blocker or histamine blocker, which is in this case, simetidine, right? This is an older question. Instead, it should be famotidine would be the drug of choice, not simetidine. And prednisone is, it's an immunomodulator, it's immunosuppressant and it is lympho, lymphocytic, right? It will kill lymphoblasts and it also will kill mast cells. So C is the correct answer for number six. Is everybody good with that? I can't see the chat, so if you're all good, I'm just going to move on. If nobody speaks up. Okay. Number seven. We have an acute outbreak of vomiting and diarrhea. So it's acute vomiting, diarrhea. One week old piglets. High morbidity, high mortality. What is the most likely cause? Okay, so we got Clostridium type C, cholebacillusis, rotavirus, transmissible gastroenteritis and vomiting and wasting disease. Okay, so you need to know your infectious viruses and infectious diseases of herds. I promise you, there will be a herd health question about viral diarrhea in pigs and/or cows on the Navley for sure. They always ask one. So what do you guys think about number seven?
I would choose C, but I also, I don't know about A.
So the answer I have here is D, transmissible gastroenteritis, right? Because we have one week old piglets, high morbidity and high mortality. Rotavirus, I don't believe carries a high mortality rate. It is highly morbid, infects a lot of them, but it's not um, that deadly. So the only advice I have for you guys with a question like this is to just, you know, make flashcards or use your vet prep um, for the infectious GI and respiratory diseases of cows and pigs. I would know those for certain. Know those for certain. Okay, number eight. Which of the following abnormal cardiac rhythms is most frequently seen in dogs with GDV? Okay, so they want the cardiac rhythm that is most seen frequently with GDV. So we have atrial premature complexes, escape beats, second degree AV block, sinus bradycardia and then ventricular premature complexes. So here. Say that again, I'm sorry.
Uh, E.
E, yes. So if you had no idea, here's where test taking, you know, techniques can kind of come into place. Atrial premature complexes, junctional escape beats, second degree AV block and sinus bradycardia. All of these originate at the level of the AV node or above. Okay, do you guys remember your electrophysiology? Yes, no? You can say no. Let's look at it real quick together. Okay, here's our heart. We have a right side and we have a left side. Every cell in the heart can generate automaticity, right? Every cardiomyocyte can depolarize. It just so happens that the ones up here in the SA node fire the fastest. You should, whenever there's a question about ECG or when you're looking at an ECG, draw this picture in your mind, okay? Take the heart, slice it in half long ways and think about this electrical circuit. Okay, this is the circuit. We go from the SA node and then energy gets sent through intra atrial tracts to the left atrium, but the majority of energy goes toward here, the AV node. Now, all around the heart, all around the heart here are the recording electrodes. Okay, that's what these little Ts stand for. Think of recording electrodes as you would a camera on the field during a sporting event. And we have more than one camera on the field, right? You guys all watch like football or basketball or something? Soccer, you all watch sports? You know what I'm talking about? So when there's a play and they're not sure what happened, what do they do? Right? When there's a race and, uh, you know, it's too close to call, they go to the instant replay, right? Let's look at this camera angle, that camera angle, the other camera angle. That's all these recording electrodes are doing. They're just, they're, they're just cameras. They're just looking at energy going toward or away from them. If energy goes toward a recording electrode, it is going to record that as a positive deflection on the graph paper. When energy goes away from the electrode, it's going to record it as a negative deflection. So when all these guys in the SA no fire and they are sending the majority of energy in this direction toward this lead, which is lead two, it sees that energy and it records a positive deflection. Now the energy goes into the AV node. When it's in the AV node, it goes this way. Okay, this arrow is not going toward that electrode. So it's going to record a negative deflection. Now the energy goes into the bundle branches. Okay, what side of the heart has more meat? The left or the right side? What side is thicker? Left or right? You guys still there?
Is it the left side?
Yes, left side has got more myocardium. So the left side is going to have more myofibers in it, right? More of this circuit. So the majority of energy, when it goes in the bundle branches, the left and right bundle branch, the majority is going to be in the left side. So we have a big arrow of energy going toward this recording electrode. That's our big R wave going up. When the energy goes up the sides like this, up the Perkinji fibers, it's going away from lead to, from this recording lead and we get the negative deflection. Okay, so there's our P wave. Here's our QRS complex, right? That's how it was made. So if you remember the circuit, anytime you see an ECG or there's a question about it, you should be able to figure it out. Because any impulse that is generated above this line, above the ventricle has to go through the circuit as it normally would, meaning it's going to be a tall, narrow complex. The impulse starts in the ventricle down here, let's say. Down here, let's say we have an area that's upset and these guys fire. The circuit is a one-way street. You can't, these impulses can't go up the circuit in the wrong direction. So the way the myofibers depolarize when the, when a, when a set of ventricular biocytes is upset and depolarize is from cell to cell to cell. So instead of going through the highway to get from here to here, now we have to go from one cell to another cell, to another cell, to another cell. It's like driving from point A to point B, taking the freeway? Or driving from point A to point B, taking all the side streets with the stop signs and stoplights? What takes longer? Cell to cell to cell. That's why a ventricular complex is wide and bizarre looking. Because on graph paper, time is the X axis. So whenever you see a very wide complex, it took longer for that complex to form. And wide complexes almost always are formed in the ventricle. So I know that was a little bit too much ECG for this question, but hopefully that will help you when you see other questions and they show you an actual rhythm tracing. So when we have GDV, we see ventricular premature complexes. And as I said, A through D, all of these abnormal beats or rhythms originated from above this line. Okay, junctional basically means it's at the AV junction. Second degree AV block basically means the signal never got from the SA to the AV node. There's a block somewhere here. So that is all happening above this line. Does that make sense? You guys good? All good? Erase some of this stuff here. Okay. I've time for one more. So we have a goat. A goat with sudden onset blindness, depression, head pressing and anorexia that progresses to recumbency and opisthotness and nystagmus. Which of the following is most likely diagnosis? Okay, so we don't know the age of the goat, but it doesn't say it's a kid. It doesn't say it's a newborn. So we have to assume it's an adult. All of a sudden goes blind, head presses, stops eating. Opisthotness, do you guys know what opisthotness is? What is opisthotness? So opisthotness is a sign of the cerebit activity. It's extensor rigidity or extensor flexion in the front legs, extension in the back legs and the head thrown back like a T-Rex, like this. That's usually a pretty significant head sign. It's not a good sign to have that. So again, this is one of those, you know, choose the most correct answer. So we have bacterial meningitis. So meningitis could cause those signs. Arthritis encephalitis, which is a, a, a disease of, of goat. Listeriosis, which is a bacterial disease. We call it circling disease, so it causes circling. Polio encephalo-malacia, again, another viral. And then scrapie. Okay, scrapie is Schutzfeldt-Klein filter's disease. That's more, right, of a chronic problem. So scrape is chronic. Bacterial meningitis, that could be acute. Listeria could be acute. All those other ones could be acute. Which one do you guys think it is?
I would probably choose the steer. I would probably choose listeria, but also polio encephalo-malacia sounds similar, but I probably would pick listeria.
So I picked listeria also initially, but with listeria, they circle. They circle. And there's no mention of that. So I think that's why um, it's a good distractor, but also why it's not correct. So D is the correct answer, polio encephalo-malacia. Right, you guys, um, I have another call at three, so I'm going to jump off. But thank you all for being on. And uh, please join the next session. We will do more of these questions from this exam. As I said, I will do a, a neural review. Neurology in general is one of those topics that most students are, oh god, neuro. Um, and almost every question, neural question on uh, the Navley has an aspect of localizing the lesion, right? Neurology, it's all about taking the symptoms, doing an neurologic exam, and then localizing the lesion, right? Is it a peripheral nerve issue? Is it a brain problem? Is it a spinal cord problem? So I go over all of that, and then we also have a more specific small animal uh, Navley questions that will, that we'll do. So I thank you guys and till next time. Take care.
Thank you.